And I pray that Allah (ﷻ) makes it a صدقة (saddaqah) that is جاية (for you and others) who come together and listening. Perhaps the questions that you ask either through the WhatsApp service or live on air could be of benefit to others, Insha'Allah. It is anticipated that the month of the Hijjah will begin on Thursday tomorrow, Insha'Allah. We look forward to hearing the news and confirmations of the sightings by Ibnillah (ﷻ). Nevertheless, it is important for us to begin preparing for the month of the Hijjah. And this is a month that is of the sacred months of Allah (ﷻ), the months of Ayyabullah. We pray that Allah (ﷻ) makes us from those who are عبادُ الله (in the days of Allah (ﷻ) that we distinguish ourselves in our worship, in our love of Allah, in our fear and تقوى (of Allah (ﷻ) and that we increase in our hope in His mercy and unending contentment of heart, Allahumma Ameen. I wanted to make our focus about the rules of قربان. Now, for those of you who are listening, it's likely that you will not, as I will not be blessed, Insha'Allah, this year to attend the Mount of Arafa and the Plains of Arafa, to stand there in attention seeking the mercy of Allah (ﷻ). However, this does not mean that we are let bereft without good deeds that we can perform in coming closer to Allah, in seeking قربة (Qurban) to Allah (ﷻ). And you can almost hear that word قربان and قربة, they come from that same formative root word, which means to draw close or to make oneself near. Who is it that we seek to be near to? It is مالك المنك (the owner of all kingdom). ذل جلال والدكرام (the most ennobled and honored Allah (ﷻ). And how do we go closer to Allah (ﷻ)? فسجد واقترم (make your sujud, you come closer to Allah). And Allah says to the Prophet ﷺ: إِنَّ أَعْطَيْنَاكَ الكَوْثَرَ فَصَلِّ لِرَبِّكَ وَانْهَرْ Number two is sacrifice. So those two are very important linked aspects of worship. Our regularity in our fulfillment of our obligatory prayers. And the day of نحر, the day of sacrifice, the day where we perform the قربان and the أضحية, the sacrifice for Allah (ﷻ), seeking to elevate ourselves, have our sins forgiven, to spread joy and peace amongst those who are seeking their daily bread, seeking some meat. Many of us, Alhamdulillah, blessed with the comforts of life. At times, we need this timely reminder that it is Allah (ﷻ) who is the provider for us and we should be from those who are seeking to share our blessings with others. We've done so two or three months earlier in the month of Ramadan with our zakah and تكاثف الفطر and fasting and in طعام وطعام. And now, once again, Allah be it makes that desire for us to consume from the meat that we offer, to share with our friends, neighbors and loved ones. And to also make sure that there is a share for الفقراء والمساكين, those who are in need, Insha'Allah. We have, Alhamdulillah, nine important days that begin the 10 days of the Hijjah. And the 10th day is the day that we celebrate our Eid, the day we commemorate our relationship with Allah (ﷻ) in commemorating Prophet Ismail and Prophet Ibrahim (عليه السلام) and our Nabi Muhammad ﷺ. So while your questions are coming in, while you are beginning to say a call in live, I wanted to speak about the concepts that relate to قربان. Believe it or not, there is an authentic Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ where the Sahabah asked. They asked the Prophet ﷺ about الأضحية and about القربان. And what's the significance of it? What do, you know, why, why should we do it? The Prophet ﷺ said, "For every hair of the animal that is sacrificed and passed on to others that is shared and feasted and community is engaged with it and shared with the poor, for every hair, a sin is forgiven." And then they said, "Well, what about animals that have wool?" The Prophet ﷺ said, "For every fiber, the sins are forgiven." So this is a phenomenal act where we seek to draw closer to Allah (ﷻ) by providing for ourselves, our families, something that is more luxurious than the norm and providing for the poor and the needy, something that is beyond their means normally. So the قربان, its essential elements is to come closer to Allah. There are three times in the Quran, in our scripture, where Allah refers to the قربان. Two of them are with regards to sacrificing an animal. And one of them is with regards to coming closer to Allah as an act of ربادة (devotion) and worship and consciousness of Allah (ﷻ). So Allah described the very children of Adam. They were ordered, one of their first acts of worship that was legislated for them was to provide a قربان, to put an offering towards Allah (ﷻ), to take something from their wealth that is shared then with others and provided to others and that is consumed so that it is in commemoration of the blessings of Allah (ﷻ) as a reminder of Allah's supremacy. We also know that Allah (ﷻ) said: وَفَدَيْنَهُ بِذِبِّ عَظِيمٍ that Ismail (عليه السلام). And in some narrations in our tradition as well as Muslims, that it could have been إسهاق (Ishaq), عليه السلام. It is not a major controversy for us Muslims, which was the son that was going to be slaughtered by Ibrahim. Both narrations are found within our traditions. Both of them have levels of evidence in the tradition and the Sunnah, the opinions of the Ulama. One of the sons of Ibrahim becomes the source of Allah (ﷻ) testing Ibrahim (عليه السلام). And the majority opinion is that it is Ismail (عليه السلام). And Insha'Allah, we are blessed to perform Hajj and Umrah again. And we can in fact show you the commemorated place in Mina, where Ibrahim and Ismail are said to have fulfilled that obligation to Allah. We have our first caller on the line, Assalamualaikum caller, how can I help?
Waalaikumsalam, my name is Wissam Khalid. And I would like to ask a question about this book now with regards to clickety-clack nails and shaving women and obviously for women. We're doing قربان, my husband and myself and my son. But if we are not doing it here, it will be done abroad. We have instructed our relatives in terms of doing the قربان. And I'd like to know, I mean, last year, my husband did it and obviously the year before. And he shaved for 10 days, about nine days, and then he's clicking. I click his nails before, before the actual time. So I just want to make, I just want you to clarify this for me, please.
Sure. جزاكم الله خير وعليكم السلام ورحمة الله وبركاته. So let me expand the question. The question that is asked is a really good question. You're going to receive a lot of WhatsApp messages, a lot of Facebook messages, maybe even on Instagram, where people are going to report the Hadith of the Prophet ﷺ that those who are not performing Hajj, not in the state of Ihraham and have intended to make the أضحية, the قربان, the slaughter, that they should not cut from their fingernails or take from their hair. And that's from the underarms and the private areas and so on as Muslims and certainly for men, from their beard and so on. Is this something that is an obligation, a recommendation? Or is it something that we are recommended not to take? Or is it recommended for us to just continue on as we normally do? So the first, I want to explain the rationale. When the Prophet ﷺ said this to the Sahabah, it was to keep them in mind that the 10 days of the Hijjah are sacred days. So in the same way that people in Hajj are to be careful with what they say, what they see, how they express their anger, that there should be no argumentation and so on. The Prophet ﷺ wants the Sahabah in Medina, wants us to remember and commemorate these days are not normal days. So, and it's very much the same reason we do that in Ihraham. We stay away from perfume and luxurious items because the intent is you are here for a purpose. And in that same way, the Prophet is focusing us, ﷺ, on the act of worship. Now, there are three main opinions amongst the Ulama. I'll begin with the most common one. The Madhab Abu Imam Abu Hanifa, Nuhman (رضي الله عنه), is very simple. It is disliked and recommended for an individual who is going to make the قربان and has the intention to provide قربان, whether they are slaughtering or not, to stay away from cutting their fingernails or taking any of their hair. It is seen as something that is recommended for them not to do it. The Madhab of Imam al-Shafi'i, Imam Ahmed and Imam Malik is that it is, the second opinion, which is the broader opinion, is that it is praiseworthy for somebody not to do it. Not just it's disliked to cut, but you will get a reward for not doing. It's praiseworthy for you not to do that if you are commemorating the 10 days of the Hijjah. So not just is it something you shouldn't do, but now it's something that you should do and in earning that reward. The third opinion is that it is compulsory, and this is one of the opinions of the Madhab of Imam Ahmed. It is necessary for a person who has the intent for the قربان not to cut their nails. And it's a very literal understanding of the Hadith of the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ. What I will suggest to all of our viewers is today is Wednesday. It is anticipated tomorrow morning, Insha'Allah, that there will be the announcement for the days of Hajj beginning. So today, tonight, before Salaatul Maghrib, Wednesday before Salaatul Maghrib, prepare yourself. Do your nail clippings, do your freshening up, get yourselves ready for these 10 days. Get yourself psychologically ready for the worship of Allah and the desisting and moving away from that which is Irrah. May Allah accept from us. We have two more questions, Insha'Allah. Next question, next caller, Assalamualaikum caller, how can I help?
Is it permissible to combine Maghrib and Isha prayers during the summer season with the daytime hours of Salaah? That's the first question.
Yes, we'll take that question first, Insha'Allah. So is it permissible to join the Maghrib and the Isha prayers in the long summer months in the northern, you know, far northern areas in the world where the day is very, very long in terms of the light, sun-filled hours in comparison to the night? The answer is yes, according to the Ulama, that there is permissibility. If the local Ulama have given the Fatwa of Soh, to join the Maghrib and Isha prayers so that you have a little bit of a rest before Salaatul Fajr. In certain regions in the world, it's sometimes only an hour or two, which is really beyond what was known at the time of the Prophet ﷺ. There are other solutions as well, which is to make the times augmented where you are praying Isha even though it may be closer to the Fajr time, even if the sun has risen, that you've counted according to the hours of the people of Mecca. But I would tend to encourage you to follow what is local amongst your Ulama. Take the advice of the learning and yes, there is permissibility in that, Insha'Allah. You had another question, Assalamualaikum?
No other questions.
جزاكم الله خير. So let's get back to our discussions of the قربان. When should the قربان be done? Well, it's necessary for the قربان to be done after Salaatul Eid. So the قربان is not offered before the Eid prayer. And you should fulfill the قربان, Insha'Allah. You should do the payment for it if you're not doing it before the Salaah. So if you're going to be paying it out, you should pay it before the Salaah. You could pay it from now and I encourage you to do so. You know, people are running campaigns for far-off regions. I know if you follow me on my social media, you will see that there are worthy places and causes. And the earlier you do it, the sooner we are able to provide it for those who are in need, for those who have that essential element in their life missing. So that's something that's really, really important, Insha'Allah. It has to be done before Salaatul Eid. Number two is that the actual slaughter should be done on the 10th day, 11th day and the 12th day. So the three days of Eid al Adha are the days where we do the sacrifice. It doesn't have to be on the first day or second day, can also be done on the third day. Number three is the meat can be distributed within those three days preferably, but it can be extended thereafter. And I know certain campaigns, they will put the meat inside long preserving tins that are then transported or frozen transported to areas where it is necessary to be occurred, Insha'Allah. If you are, if you make the slaughter before the Salaah, it is simply صدقة (saddaqah) and you mean to redo it. Who has to pay the قربان? That's always a question. So, you know, how do I know, is it an obligation or is it something recommended? The majority opinion amongst the Ulama is that it is Sunnah مؤكدة, a confirmed Sunnah of the Prophet ﷺ. Imam Abu Hanifa uses the word واجب. And sometimes people get confused. The word واجب to Imam Abu Hanifa is nearly synonymous with Sunnah مؤكدة or مستحب for Imam al-Shafi'i, Imam Malik, Imam Ahmed. The reason for that is Imam Abu Hanifa has two levels of obligation. The first level is called فرض. فرض is something that there is an explicit text in the Quran, explicit statement of the Prophet ﷺ that cannot be understood in any other way except that it is an obligation. You have no choice, you must do it. It is فرض to pray five daily prayers. But it is واجب to pray وتر according to Imam Abu Hanifa. To Imam Malik, Imam al-Shafi'i, Imam Ahmed, it's not considered واجب in their usage of the word. It's considered مستحب, recommended. What's the reason for that? Imam Abu Hanifa sees the Hadith of عائشة الله عنها. The Prophet never left وتر while traveling, even while sick. He always prayed it, never ever left it. So he saw that that's an indirect way of the Prophet obligating upon us. But it is not something that is literally stated in the Quran. You must pray your واجب the way it is stated about the obligatory five daily prayers. So there's a separation between فرض and واجب. The word واجب for Imam Abu Hanifa means it is something you cannot leave off forever and ever. You can't say, "I'm never going to pray قربان." It's something that's just Sunnah مؤكدة or it means you must do it and you are highly rewarded for doing it. If you fail at it once or twice, there isn't anything necessarily reprehensible. There's no clear instruction in the Quran for it. But it is something that is heavily rewarded and should be and heavily encouraged for you never to miss it. Imam and therefore قربان should be something paid. Who needs to pay it? Well, the Hadith of Abu Ayub (رضي الله عنه), it was asked, "How did you pay for قربان at the time of your, at the time of the Prophet ﷺ?" This is in the era after the life of the Rasool ﷺ. Abu Ayub al-Ansa'i, he said, "We would have the lord of the house, the man of the house, he would offer a sacrifice on behalf of himself and his family." And that was what was common to the Sahabah, this is what they saw. We do know from the Sunnah of the Prophet ﷺ that he made قربان in the last year of his life, two large rams. One that he slaughtered and he said, "This is in my name and the name of the Ahlul Bayt, the family of the Prophet ﷺ." And then he made another قربان and he said, "This is on behalf of anyone in my Ummah who is unable to pay قربان." Which means that there are people who are not necessarily obligated to pay, to pay out the قربان or to perform the قربان. So what is the limit of when you have to pray? The limit is that are you a person who is worthy of zakah or not? So if you are a family that is not worthy of zakah, you have, Alhamdulillah, enough to see you through. You are a person who has now نصوب, not just that I'm not worthy of receiving zakah, but I'm also obligated to pay zakah. So if you have to pay zakah, you have in Australian dollars about $6,000, about 3,500 British pounds if you are owing with the gold نصوب. If you have that in savings and it's been with you over a year, you should pay out from it a قربان on behalf of yourself and your family. The Madhab of Imam Abu Hanifa also encourages anyone who has their own wealth and it's reached their own نصوب that they should make the قربان. Now, this is a disagreement amongst the Ulama. Does everybody who is obligated to pay zakah, man, woman and child, need to make their own قربان? It is recommended to do so, it is not an obligation. Why do I say recommended? Because it is a Sunnah to offer more than one animal. We know the Prophet ﷺ offered two. And if you are able to do more, you are welcome to do more. It is a great revival of the Sunnah of the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ. Is there somebody who has an excuse not to pay قربان even though they have amassed a certain amount of wealth? Some people have spoken about debts that are owed or somebody, you know, has to pay massive, massive interest rates that it is preferable that whatever they have to get rid of the Iraah should be prioritized first, Insha'Allah. Finally, in the last couple of minutes, maybe another point of clarification. What are the types of animals that are slaughtered? You can't like say, "Quربان, I'm going to slaughter a chicken." So the Prophet ﷺ is the one who stipulated, what are the types of animals to be offered? That they have to be animals that are healthy, that are well grown, that they don't have a broken horn or that, you know, they don't have any ailments in them. You are supposed to keep the best of your wealth, the best of what you can offer for those who are going to benefit and enjoy it with you. And finally, Insha'Allah, I want the mindset of your قربان to be one that I'm not just doing what I'm obligated to do or something that I have to do, but rather it is with the spirit of seeking greater and greater reward from Allah, magnifying the praise of Allah. لا ينال الله لهما ولا دما ولا يناله التقوى منكم Allah receives piety, not the shedding of its blood or its meat. May Allah allow us to continue in that Sunnah of Ibrahim (عليه السلام) and our Nabi Muhammad ﷺ. We have a short intermission, Insha'Allah. And then we will come back with more questions and answers on Islam Channel. I look forward to seeing you in a few minutes after our intermission. جزاكم الله خير وجزا. سبحان الله وبحمد الله. أشهد أن لا إله إلا الله. أستغفر وأجوب الله. You can call in and wait in anticipation for our return, Insha'Allah. جزاكم الله خير. For those of you who are watching on my social media, I'm happy to take some of your questions down.
Sorry, Chef, just a quick thing. Do you have a microphones, sorry, headphones?
I can get headphones, Insha'Allah. But at the moment, it's just going to be a little bit of an issue with the residence.
Oh, what do you mean, sir?
Like, it'll be a little bit difficult to just go and grab them at the moment, but maybe for next time, Insha'Allah.
Okay, okay, but next time, could you please use headphones? Because the problem is when I'm speaking to you, we... جزاكم الله خير. We have about 5 minutes 30 seconds break.
Insha'Allah. جزاكم الله خير. All right, for those of you who are watching live with me on our social media streams, Insha'Allah. Do share your questions, I'm happy to take them while we are on our break with them on Islam Channel. I see one question here. I see one question here coming through. Assalamualaikum, I have a question about Hajj and perfume. I would like to pack a scarf for Hajj however I washed it and the scented soap before packing it. Can I take the scarf and wear it? Yes, you can. I would recommend just give it another wash with just water. Listen, the issue with scent is to add scent intentionally in a way that is meant to distinguish you from others. The very slight scent that you're talking about from soap and things like that is not the scent that was referred to in the statements of the Prophet ﷺ. Back then, they used to layer perfume, they would mat their hair down and wax it with perfume. So that was what was meant. It's not about that really small scent that you will get from your, from your daily wash. That's for your question, sister. May Allah (ﷻ) accept your Hajj, have a safe trip. And if you need anything in the meantime, you can always contact me on the private messaging system, yourself and your family. And I'll be happy to answer your questions and support you along the way, Insha'Allah. Is it true that when I sacrifice for my family, she is the one who is Sunnah upon her not to trim her hair? No. So this, yeah, so the understanding is for some people, they said it's a person who's actually doing the slaughter. It can be that, but in general, most of them are that if they hold anyone who's near, it was that they are offering the sacrifice. Even if it is done on their behalf, it is preferable to withhold from cutting your hair and from your nails to increase your consciousness of your obligation to Allah (ﷻ). We have another question that's come in. What's the ruling on giving inheritance to non-Muslim offspring? So, you know, this is something that will be done after your, after your time. So generally speaking, inheritance is different to leaving behind a gift in one's will. So there are different rules for that, Insha'Allah. Speak to one of your local scholars, Ibn Da. We have another question. Assalamualaikum, Chef, can I ask? Just if wearing high heels is considered Iraah based on the Aya of the Quran? I'm not sure which Aya you are referring to. But if you mean high heels that are doing the clickety-clack and bouncing around a marble floor that attracts attention? Or if it is because the high heels are causing the swaying of the hips? Then, and they are worn for that, it should not, it should not be done? The third reason the Ulama spoke about that is as an act of deception to make oneself seem taller to, you know, a prospective spouse or something. Then it could be something that is an act of dishonesty in that sense. But generally speaking, with regards to libas, whatever people wear, we are normally open to wear it in general. If you feel that it's something that is attracting attention, it's done that's causing your movement to be of attention to others or if it's something that's of discrepancy or dishonesty, then it is better to abide with that. والله تعالى أعلم. جزاكم الله خير. See if there's any other questions. Bismillah.
1 minute 30 seconds of more lives.
All right, we're going to be going back to our Islam Channel live feed in the next couple of minutes. by Ibnillah (ﷻ). جزاكم الله خير. If there are any on Instagram, in the next minute, we'll do our best to answer that as well. Allahumma Alakalhamm. All right. A question, "I realize I consumed some money unlawfully way back and I realized this is a debt that I should pay back. If giving قربان or صدقة should I get the reward or is this a debt?" So certainly you should prioritize giving back the debt. And if that is going to deplete your savings, then قربان is not something written upon you. The priority is to give back the debt, even if you give it back without people knowing that it was you who took it or if you were unaware and people are willing to forgive you, that Bismillah. Do so. If that's the amount that's going to be in conflict with your قربان, give that first. That is the priority, that will always be the priority, Insha'Allah. The rights of others are before the rights of Allah (ﷻ). Always put that as a general rule in your mind that what we owe to others is more pleasing to be paid to them before we do something that is between us and Allah (ﷻ). That's a construct of our Shar'iah, والله تعالى أعلم. All right, we'll give our attention back to Islam Channel, Insha'Allah. Ask Allah (ﷻ) to grant us success and باركة (barmak) by Ibnillah (ﷻ). All right, I'm with you again back in the studio, brothers.
9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, and you are live.
Assalamualaikum ورحمة الله وبركاته. My brothers and sisters of Islamic Channels, viewing ship, may Allah (ﷻ) grant you Khair and Barakah as we are on the cusp at the beginning of the Hijjah by Ibnillah (ﷻ). We pray that Allah (ﷻ) gathers the Ummah of the Prophet Muhammad ﷺ in bigger and better days as the days go by. That Allah (ﷻ) ends for us the 1443 Hijjah year upon Khair and Barakah. That Allah accepts and keeps safe the Hujjah who have traveled to bait Allah in Iraah. That Allah allows us the honor to join them in the coming years, Allahumma Ameen. May Allah (ﷻ) console those of us who are deprived from being on the plains of Arata this year, Allahumma Ameen. For those of you who are interested, this is a live Q and A session. You are welcome to call him live on air or send your questions in through the wonderful vehicle of Islamchannel.tv. It's your brother Yahya Ibrahim coming to you live from my home here in Perth, Western Australia. As is the norm, noon each and every Wednesday on Islam Channel all around the world, Alhamdulillah. We were, we were speaking about some of the general, very general rules of قربان and we were taking questions from you, but a variety of different things. But I wanted to continue with some of the other questions that relate to قربان. Well, what if you, what should you do if you miss قربان? So, you know, just say you, you know, just say you had wealth. You didn't know قربان was that important and you wanted to make up قربان from previous years. Can you pay it now? And the answer is yes. So in this season of قربان... So in this season of Qurban, in these three days of Eid al-Afha, make a second Qurban, make a third or a fourth or a fifth. And it might be that there were three or four years you missed, then fulfill that obligation. In those two or three years that you might have fulfilled that obligation, Insha Allah, in tandem altogether, Bismillah. We have two callers on the line, Assalamualaikum caller, how can I help? Assalamualaikum caller? Yes, sister.
Yeah, so my first question is because of the, you know, the God feeling and the intuition. So I would like to know the ruling of Islam, the Islamic ruling, the Islamic perspective regarding. Because I think we have so many thoughts that are, Islamic and non-Islamic about trusting our bad feelings and trusting about, you know, for example, if we feel that something is not right, she is doing it. Whereas if something is right, then we should do it. So for example, if I'm the first person, oh, my God feeling tells me, oh, that person is not right, then I should be there with that person. I just feel, I just wonder about Islamic, what, you know, what the Islamic perspective of this? Because in Islam, we tend to say Allah knows best, we rely on Allah. Well, it seems to me that God and, you know, following intuition can make us very complex, very complicated.
Okay. Yes, how about we take the first question first and then we move on to the second one, Insha Allah? Alright, so when you're speaking about sister, in Islamic terminology, there is a concept called Firasat. And Firasat, you know, comes from the word of, in English you can translate its root word as something that allows you to be intuitive and insightful. It's the instinct that animals have when they are hunting. So there's this heightened sense around them, they can hear everything, smell everything, they can almost feel what is around them before they are attacked or that they are in the hunt. There's this greater sense of intuition. Now, the Sahabah, they used to have statements, one of the famous statements of Abdullah ibn Umar, he would say, Be careful, beware of the intuition or the inner sight, the insight of a believer. Because they can sense what others can't sense. And this was something that the Prophet SAW honed in the Sahabah. He taught us that Allah will give us signs that perhaps the eyes can't see, but the heart can sense and see. And that's the meaning of the authentic Hadith, that is a sacred text or a Hadith Qudsi, where Allah speaks and the Prophet paraphrases his speech, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. Qal Allah, that Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala said, that when my servant does the obligatory actions that I've enshrined upon him, they grow so close to me that I become the eyes they see with, the ears they hear with, the tongue they speak with, the hand they strike with. And Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala tells us in Surah Al-Amfal, Ya Muhammad, it was not you or your companions who cast the strike, but rather the strike was from Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. So it shows us that we can be enabled by the might of Allah, be able to see with the sight that is blessed to us by Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And this is not something restricted just for those who claim to be the higher believers. Rather, this is for all of us at certain points in time, that when we put our dependence upon Allah and our trust in Allah, and we do say Allahu A'lam, but we work hard and ask Allah for guidance in whatever it is that we are confronted with, we find that Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala strengthens us, ennobles us and assists us to uncover things that perhaps others are not able to see. And where one finds fault in that, where one's instincts lead them away from the path of Allah, away towards danger rather than safety, that is a sign that there is an imbalance and a negligence in their relationship with Allah, Azza wa Jalla. The more you are intuitive with Allah, the more you will be blessed maybe with a dream that is righteous in its vision or that you will have an uneasiness or a solid heart, an easy heart toward the decision you need to make. Or you did not need, you did not ask of advice, but someone gave you a word of advice that seemed to just be fortuitous, you don't know how they said that word, but it struck your heart. And this is something that the Ulama have been blessed with, may Allah grant us this Barakah, that sometimes when we speak, it's as if we are speaking to a particular person, that it strikes them in a way that makes meaningful sense to them and that was planted in our heart and on our tongue for them to hear it in a particular moment in time. So yes, we do have a belief in an intuition, in an eye of the heart that sees and the soul that sees beyond what is physical. And I end with the verse in the Quran, Allah says, It's not that their eyes are dim and unable to see, but their hearts have darkened so they are unable to perceive. And because their heart cannot see, their eyes are not able to detect the imbalance. May Allah protect us from that, Allahumma Ameen. There was another question you had, sister, Assalamualaikum.
Now, you know, in some families, they, they put money to buy the family of sacrifice. And I just wanna ask, what's the Islam ruling about this? Because the family, which is from my family, what they do, they mean, they, they want to put old money to buy the sheep or their parves, right? But if the older brothers are married, older brothers are married, and they're giving birth to a house, is that allowed?
So you can have more than one share on one animal if the animal is large enough. So a camel or a bull or a cow can be divided into seven shares according to the Sunnah of the Prophet SAW. So if every, just say there are four brothers and three sisters and they say, okay, we're going to come together and buy one, one bull and we're going to have this buffalo or this cow or this camel done as a Qurban and all seven sharing it, that is acceptable, Insha Allah. But they cannot share a smaller animal like a goat or a sheep, Insha Allah. May Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala accept from all of us. We have a caller on the line, Assalamualaikum caller, how can I help?
Try again, Sheikh.
Assalamualaikum caller, how can I help? Insha Allah.
I have two questions.
Sure.
Okay, brother, the first question that I'm asking is although you answered this firstly earlier on, and my question is that with regards to nails and hair, you know, that people have the intention to like, Shaka, I have a medical condition at the moment that is just, I've been told it's dressed and what else, but my nails are very brittle and they just break, you know, they're not long by any, but the cuts just go into the skin as well. So you know, sometimes the little bit I have to clip, but sometimes the whole, you know, age. So it's very difficult for me to not use a nail cutter for between now and the Qurban time, even the next ten days.
There is no problem with that at all, sister. And even if you were in Hajj, there would be no problem with, at all for that. May Allah do it in a Hajj one day. And I would say to you, if I was assisting you, don't worry about that, click whatever is going to be a necessity for you to click.
Okay, and the same with my hair, brother. When I'm combing my hair, you know, there's a lot here and I've been told it's not an issue, it's just great. You know, again, the head, so I'm gonna tie a scarf, something, you know.
Any, anything that is not, anything that is not done out of intent. So you're not going to a quaffier or trying to, you know, you know, make a new shape for your hair and a new haircut, that would be acceptable, Insha Allah. May Allah grant you Khair and Barakah and distress all of us, Bismillah.
Ameen, and the second question is, it's, I, I, I have the desire to Qurban every year and generally abroad. And many times I've been, you know, I've been to Qurban, but I haven't had the blessing because of the benefits of eating a little bit of meat from, from that Qurban, it's a problem. So couple of times I've done it here, but then, you know, like eat, distribution, giving it in time and I can't typically do it myself, I have got to get something to do. And some people don't like to see me eat, or I'm Qurbaning people to say, oh, it's what does it mean and it's not healthy or whatever. So all those issues, and this, this year I thought I could do three Qurban, in the sense that I've got two abroad and one here. And the two abroad, you know, they distribute the SAW for, but the one that I do here, can I keep all of that myself? Because there's supposed to be one portion from the Qurban. Is that, will that be allowed or will that be wrong? That's the question.
Jazakallah Khair, that's a really good question, sister. And Subhanallah, Wallahi, I have no answer for you. I don't have an answer that I know from the Sunnah with regards to that. But what I will do, Insha Allah, is if Allah gives us the life and the energy, next week, Insha Allah, I will have an answer as a part of the beginning of the show. I can, I can tell you what my, my heart and from the Utsul that I know thinks, but it would be an incomplete answer. Wallahu Ta'ala A'lam, may Allah increase us in our knowledge and may Allah protect us, Ya Robb. What I would say to you, Insha Allah, is that even if it is a part of the animal that you keep, try to share some of it anyway, even the one that is with you local, try to share some of it anyway, just to make it a little bit easier. It doesn't have to be in the first or second day, but you can do your best in that regard. But I'll have an answer for that next week. We have another caller on the line, Assalamualaikum caller, how can I help? Assalamualaikum caller? Yes, sister.
Yeah, the first question is regarding the Qurban you just mentioned. Um, I have been doing it for years now, because family, but no one do it. But last year, my son also was able and he also bought an animal and they have explained for that. So I'm just calling to find out whether she should drink or I should say that we should for the whole family. Because he can still buy animals and then do it.
Alright, Jazakallah Khair, that's a really good question, sister.
And then the first Qurban is, is this, is this allowed? Is this one for us to give to the family and then the next, our extended family or is this for the needy?
Okay, Jazakallah Khair. So we'll begin with the second question. Allah, Alhamdulillah, it's a pleasure to hear from you, sister, may Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala accept from all of us, Allahumma Ameen. So we begin with the second question. It is acceptable, Insha Allah, to share the Qurban with yourself, your family, your loved ones, your neighbors and also the poor. And the Sunnah is to try to divide it into three different lots. So one for you and your, your family, one for those who are neighbors and friends, Muslim and non-Muslim, and one for the poor and the needy. Why do I say Muslim and non-Muslim? In the authentic Hadith of Abdullah ibn Amr ibn Al-Aziz. This is after the life of the Prophet SAW. Abdullah ibn Amr ibn Al-Aziz is one of the greatest, most knowledgeable Sahabah. And the Hadith is in Muthari, he said to the butcher, the one who was doing the slaughter on his behalf, he said to him, after you've slaughtered the animal, divide it into pieces and give the first share to my friend who happens to be a Jewish man, to my neighbor who happens to be a Jewish man. So the butcher said, Asalaf, Ayahudi, the Salaf said, Ayahudi, should I begin with the Jewish man? He said, yes, he is my nearest neighbor, so give him. And therefore that gives you an understanding that we should share this meat with those who are with us and those who are abroad, whether they are in need or not, Insha Allah. With regards to your first question, can more than one person from the family make more than one Qurban? Or should one stop if the other one is doing it in intention on behalf of them? And I'll keep it in that general format. So what I will say to you is we know the Prophet SAW made Qurban on behalf of himself and his family. And that included his daughter and included other people. And yet we also know that Ali ibn Abi Talib and others made Qurban for themselves as well, not just being surprised with the Qurban of the Prophet Muhammad sallallahu alaihi wasallam. And then after the death of the Prophet SAW, we know Ali ibn Abi Talib made Qurban on behalf of himself and the family of the Rasool, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, his family and the family of the Prophet SAW and also on behalf of our Nabi Muhammad sallallahu alaihi wasallam, a second animal. This is a tradition that is acceptable within our Sunnah, Insha Allah. Just a few more things that I wanted to share with you, a general understandings of the issues that relate to Qurban. Can we preserve the Qurban to be eaten outside the three days? And the answer is yes. They do not, they do not have to be distributed and eaten on the same day. So you can have some Qurban and you can freeze it, you can eat a little bit later. Perhaps you have an event where people are coming on the next weekend. It should be slaughtered and distributed as soon as we can to, so that people who need it can have it, but you can eat it at a later date, Insha Allah. Also, can we give Qurban abroad or is it better to give it local? And the answer is, you know, in certain places around the world, it is more difficult to give it locally as one of our dear callers mentioned. So for example, there are particular laws that relate to animals and, and you know, where they are slaughtered, how they are kept and refrigerated vehicles need to be used. It's not just a simple thing as butchering the animal and, and you know, sharing it. So those laws must take precedent and it's something that we have to be very careful to maintain those laws. They are for our public health and for our well-being. In the same way, therefore, sometimes it becomes more convenient for us to perform the Qurban in a place where it is also immediately necessary. I know that, you know, my Qurban, I have a campaign for the people in Afghanistan. I know that they had earthquakes and all of these different kind of things that if we can offer, even though it's more expensive in certain areas because it is very difficult to come by me, sometimes I have had that preference in my own personal practice and life. So although I may have Qurban in my own household, I will do a second one where I seek to fulfill that obligation and that need for people who need it the most, where it is most needed, Allahu Ta'ala A'lam. The Prophet SAW sacrificed on behalf of those who were unable to sacrifice. And that is a great Sunnah that we can instill in our life, Insha Allah. It is a great Sunnah that we can begin to try to think of, you know, fulfilling more than one animal for the needs of those who are at a distance. We ask Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala to grant us success, Allahumma Ameen. The last question that I will share with you is, why are there so many different prices? You know, sometimes we get a Qurban that says fifty and another says a hundred and another that says two hundred. Why are there so many different prices? Well, it depends on where the amount is going to be delivered or where the meat is going to be slaughtered. Some places they have greater access to, for example, a buffalo or a cow. And therefore you can have the cow divided into seven shares. So the price of it is generally a little bit less than an individual ram or an individual sheep. So it might be that you get a share of the cow for fifty, while if you did your own sheep, it would be eighty or ninety. Second, it might be on locality. So you know, it might be that it costs two hundred and fifty dollars if you, if you are doing it in a a place of difficulty to allow that meat to arrive there on time and be slaughtered on time. You know, some of the remote areas in Afghanistan, for example, while in comparison in other places, they may have animals that are readily there, that are accessible, that makes it a little bit cheaper. So the, the price, it's not about the dollar amount, it's about the animal that you are fulfilling and the sacrifice and the need that you are seeking to provide, Insha Allah. So I want you to know that paying the larger amount or the smaller amount, it's about the, the animal that we are giving, not just the dollar amount. It's not interchanged or thought of in terms of dollars, Insha Allah. I pray that Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala enters the month of Dill Hijjah upon us with Khair and Barakah. There are three recommended acts in the Sunnah that I encourage for myself and family and yours to perform. The first is to fast as many of the days of Dill Hijjah as possible. Number two is to fast the day of Arata. It is likely the day of Arata is going to be Friday, so you need to fast the Thursday before it and the Friday. Get yourself ready to, to fast, not this Thursday, next Thursday and Friday and the day of the 8th and the 9th of Dul Hijjah, inshallah. If Thursday morning is the beginning of Dul Hijjah bi isnna laa ta'ala. And the third act of worship is to increase our charitableness and to offer more than one Qurban if we are able to provide food for those who are needing, to provide aid clothes for those who are distant. And there are many options that you can find, that you can assist others in that regard. May Allah allow us to bring happiness on the day of Eid to those who are needing it, Allahumma aameen. To your brother Yahya Ibrahim, I look forward to seeing you again next week. Subhanahu wa bihamduk. Ashadu allaikum wa alaikum. Astaghfirullahalaaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh.
Sheikh.
Yes, my brother. Yes, my brother.